You want on soon? While Robert's working on that, um let's get started with introductions. Guy, you want to start, please?
Guy, I'm here to go superintendent. Nathan Stryker, clerk treasurer, seven eight three South Cooley Drive.
Elliot, ten fifty eight South Cooley Lake Drive, councilman, board three.
Dan Rippey, one twenty six Lakeside Court, councilmember, ward two.
Molly Weber, age twenty-two, South Clear Lake Drive, member at large.
George Chakel, one point four West Cooley Drive, uh councilman, board one.
Brits, lesser ninety-five, ten and drive, council member at large.
First number, town marshal.
Whoever calling is on the issue.
Great, thanks, everybody. So now, um if I can have a motion to move forward with the agenda as presented and published.
Molly, this is Brent. I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Brent. Can I have a second?
This is Brent, I'll say.
Thanks, Brent. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We will now turn it over to our clerk treasurer, Nathan Stryker, on budget review. Um before we get started, I just want to say thank you to all the department leads. And George and Dan for working so closely uh with Nathan as he works to prepare that. So. It's gonna be a little grueling, this is state policy, that we have to read all budget information out loud, so. Get comfortable.
Yes, thank you, Molly. Uh so to get started, um I just want to thank uh George. And Dan for um this process. It started back in July, uh that's when we first. Started putting our budget numbers together. I then met with uh department heads. In the end of July, and in August, and reviewed all of their financials. And then came up with the initial budget that we input. And I put that into the state work accounts website. I reviewed that with my regional rep from SBOA, George Hilton. Uh after that, uh George and Dan and I met again and reviewed the numbers once more. Um and then Dan and I met at the beginning of this month. And kind of started whittling down things even a little bit more. So as we walk through this, you will kind of see um. The process and how it kind of worked things. So if Robert, we can pull up the Clear Lake budget, please. And have that on one side.
Yeah.
What we're gonna do is we're gonna have the sheet that I handed up to you. We're gonna have that on one side. I'm gonna be reading off, this is our line item budget. Has every line, uh every line item that we eat. Um and and these are all tax levied accounts, and these are all money we give. Um from taxpayers. So these are the ones we have to report to the DOJ. Um on the left-hand side, you'll see the sheet that we'll be going over. On the right-hand side, we're gonna pull up Dan's um. Workbook that we put, that he put together for the financials for the town. And some really great tool, and we'll all be able to see a practical everyday use today. As you pull up the the worksheet, you can see every line item. Uh the reasons that we can pay out of that account. Uh the vendors that we pay out of that account. Uh he also has um twenty twenty-four numbers and twenty twenty-five numbers and estimates. So it's a really great workbook, and I've been using it every day, so that's why we have a couple here. So if we do have any questions, we can cross cross-reference, say, hey, why are we increasing the budget, or why are we decreasing the budget? We also have the explanations at the end of Dan's worksheet as well, for every um. Adjustment that we're making. So it's a really great worksheet. It's available to everybody here on the council, so you guys can always pull it up and look it up. Um if you ever have any questions. So with all that being said, once we get that up, we'll say a few things. Sorry, if we need, yeah.
I think I would just go ahead and start with this while Robert works on that.
If we have any questions, Lou, we can, we can run them too. So randy day fund is the first thing, uh one we're gonna talk about. Uh we're not touching anything there. We're not uh expecting any expenditures out of the randy day funds. We're leaving that as a, we're not touching that. Hopefully, at the end of next year, we'll be able to add a little bit of funds to it, but we'll see where we go. So on the general side, the first thing that we're gonna look at is the town council. Uh we are leaving those numbers unchanged because we are not increasing wages for the town council, so those numbers are staying the same. The clerk treasurer uh is going from thirty-eight, six oh six, up to forty-one, six seventeen. And I should remind everybody that these numbers are uh with George's updated salary estimate. So these numbers that we're looking at do have George's updated salary estimate numbers in him. Uh next one down is a building clerk, that's Jen. Her uh pay is getting adjusted a little bit because of um the different funds that she gets paid on. So she's. Going down a little bit on the general side, but she'll go up a little bit on the other sides. Zoning administrator, same kind of thing on that one. We're going down with forty-one, sixty, probably adjusted on other sides. Uh that fee clerk treasurer, we do not have one, so there's no funds being spent there. Town marshals, we're going from eighty thousand down to sixty-seven thousand. And that is based on the number of hours that the marshals are able to work in salary ordinance. And that's how we come up with those numbers for the uh marshals. Per, we have adjusted down a little bit. Um it's down from fourteen, three forty-five down to eleven, one fifty-six. Per is our retirement benefits that the town workers get. Um and it's eleven point two percent is what the town matches. And that is a state-regulated um percentage that the state uh mandates. Next one, social security and Medicare, that's pretty straightforward. We adjust that depending on our payroll, and that's gone down a little bit, from thirteen, eight ninety-one to twelve, five, two nine. Unemployment insurance is staying the same. I pay an unemployment premium quarterly. Um and those are right around two hundred dollars, so that's why that's not changing. Uh employee health insurance, we're bumping up that a little bit, and that's gonna be a discussion to be had at a different time. Office supplies, we're, excuse me, Nathan, can I just stop you for a second? Uh my apologies. Uh I, as I review my worksheets on salary and wages.
True.
Uh the bucket of compensation is good. Uh the one piece that I missed, another piece that I missed, was the social security tax. On council members' salaries. Okay. And that's a couple of thousand, so we need to add, just bear with me. Social Security, um we need to add about eleven hundred.
Okay.
To the um. Social Security to bring it to about fourteen, nine ninety-one, or you can round it at fifteen thousand for Social Security. That would take care of uh the council members. Going forward, we'll have that in the formula, but it's just. If we've been stumbling over that for about a year or so, and if I could just. Yeah, that's kind of what we're doing here. This is our initial budget. This is our public notice. These are additional notes. So once I read through everything here today, we need to adjust everything. I will then adjust our numbers, and then in the October meeting is the final adoption. So when we're reading through these numbers, all these numbers can be changed, and a few of them will be changed. Um for the October meeting when we actually adopt. So uh thank you, George, and I will get a note, all right, for that. Uh okay, so back to office supplies, we've gone down to three hundred dollars. Uh operating supplies, we've gone up a little bit. And I would probably like to see the reason behind that one, but we haven't got any, so. Uh fuel and tires. Leave it on that a little bit on that. We just looked at our actuals from this year. We've extrapolated out to next year. Um next line, turn the page. Equipment repairs, we're leaving that the same. Plan commission, we are increasing that by four hundred and twenty-five dollars. I imagine that's probably his board meetings, and then it would be increasing fees. Um. Uh board of zoning appeals, we're keeping that the same. Town attorneys, we are increasing by twenty thousand. Um if Dan wants to talk to that point, he can, but.
Which one?
Um town attorney on the panel, sorry.
Um that's just reflective of where we're at in in our navigations and where we expect to get. Uh progress of office wise, that was developed with the attorneys.
Correct. So yes, we wanted with the attorneys, and we've kind of, we've tried to estimate out. Um what the fees will be for next year, so this is a, that's been obviously, and we hope this can be. Pretty good, so we don't have to do any additional preparations next year. Uh next category, other professional services, we're increasing that by five hundred dollars. Um we do use this category quite a bit, and. It it's used for a lot of our professional services, obviously, because that's what it is. Um I will, but.
If I can make a comment or question on that one, I know um earlier this year. Nathan, we have used money, um I'm assuming of that fund to provide extra training for you.
Yes.
Is it this one? So I just want to make sure that that's reflective of if you need additional or want additional training. If that's kind of been built into the budget.
Yeah. If I could also chime in, additionally, uh Nathan, I've been working with our HR consultant. And uh she has helped me with some compensation issues that we've been working on. Uh going forward, uh there's gonna be probably a little more work uh as we look at our uh salary and wage ordinance. Uh she took a brief look at it and said, ah, you guys got some issues here. So she sent me a twenty-four-page template. I don't know if you saw that, and it's okay. Yeah, I think we just need to scrub through it and then. Grab it and get it back to her. So there's gotta be some expenditures there. Was that looking at our rate, and figure out how many hours we're gonna need her.
So that would be a takeaway, I might have to adjust that if we now.
Yes, which uh which.
Professional services, thirteen eighty-three.
I had, I lost one, where were we? Other professional services. There's one down. We good to go to the next one? Okay, postage, uh we increased postage by a little bit, but me and Jen actually, before the stamp split out this year, we already bought. Um eight hundred dollars with the stamp, so hopefully that should carry us through the beginning part of next year. Uh meetings and travel, we have increased meetings and travel because that's where we pay uh our mileage out of for the town employees. Also, that is the category that is paid for when I go to my conferences. Uh my AIM conference and my state board accounts conference. So we did increase that a little bit to reflect the costs associated with that. Telephone online service, we kept the same, that's pretty self-explanatory, conferences. We moved down to zero, and we've kind of moved that those funds into the meeting and travel category, so we're not really gonna be using that conference one anymore.
So we'll be able to remove that.
Yeah, at the end of the year, I'm gonna scrub through our list, and I'm gonna remove the accounts we're not using.
Thank you.
Uh next line, publication legal notices, these are the um notices that I. Posted with the paper for all the different meetings and things that we have to do to town. Uh insurance is pretty straightforward, that's our town insurance. Um I don't know why we always had it at sixty-four thousand, that's where it was when I got here. Um but thirty-six thousand is what we. And that actually has a bit of meat, a little bit of meat on the bones as well, um because our. Insurance costs are right around seven thousand dollars per quarter, so we do have definitely money built in about one as well. Um electric, we have moved down from thirty thousand six to twenty-two thousand. Um that is reflective of our actuals for this year. Same thing with heat, we've left that the same, exactly hasn't changed. Sewage, um this is for the town hall sewage, this is for the toilets that we use here at the town hall, uh that's increased by eighty dollars.
Uh we can, yes, we saw um that NIPSCO has petitioned for an increase. Uh very clearly, so I think that we should, we should uh monetize that. Line item and other NIPSCO-related services. We're gonna have to recollect that.
Yeah, I did read your report, I reported on those. Uh next line item is ground maintenance, we're not moving that at all, we keep that same, same with the next line, building maintenance, we're not moving that, machines and equipment, we're keeping that the same.
I want to pause again on the building maintenance.
Yes.
Um I know we've had some kind of conversation about the generator. Or.
I would think the generator would probably fall under the sewer.
No, because it would be the maintenance for this building, so it's part of our um um hazard preparedness.
Okay.
We need to make sure, one of the first pieces of advice, and we're still starting in this. There's a meeting later this month, but the advice was initially to have a generator that could fully service this building, so. You know, if people, residents needed to come in, at least we have a door that separates our offices from the public room, and we have restrooms. And so the suggestion was to have a generator that would service this whole building, and I know, Guy, we're working on that again, I don't know. I just want to, I don't need conversation on the generator, but I just want to make sure that if we have to. Improve our generator, that we have that looked at.
That's something I haven't thought about, I haven't talked about, so we can discuss that further, obviously.
And that's.
Georgia.
I didn't have that much conversation.
Okay.
Just, guys, are we talking about one generator or two? Can can our sewer generator power this right now? No. But if we update, if we update, and the the track we're on is to update that generator to be a big enough generator to do everything. Because that generator's twenty-four years old.
And Dan just shared this, isn't it? Yeah, and it's very early. I mean, we don't know what all we need to do from the hazard response perspective, but Dan just shared that would be under capital equipment anyway, so.
Oh, yes, that makes sense, yes. Um alright, so grounds maintenance, uh building maintenance, machine and equipment, uh peer rental, six hundred dollars, that hasn't changed. Other services and charges, we're moving that down by fifteen hundred dollars. Uh I'm trying not to use the other services and charges category very often, uh just because it's pretty vague. Uh dues and memberships, we're keeping at seven thousand. There's a lot of dues and memberships that we pay throughout the years, many different organizations, we just kept that same. Uh other, we did have forty-eight thousand of that last year. Um I don't really remember why we kept that at forty-eight thousand, it's completely raised, uh because we don't. Need forty-eight thousand dollars in other account.
Alright, so on the general side, that was uh intended to be a backstop if we were uh to secure employee insurance.
Hmm.
Uh but that isn't what's happening, so that's close.
Thank you. So that concludes the general account. Uh we'll now move. To LIC. LIC is local income tax. Most of this stuff. Or most of these funds are used for police and safety around town. Um uniform and supplies, these go to mainly the police officers. Uh we're moving that up by a thousand dollars. Uh fire protection, that is based on the payments and the uh insurance rate that we pay town Fremont for our fire protection. Uh equipment repairs, we're moving up by a thousand dollars. Uh spilling services, um we're moving down, spilling services.
And also for Lexington.
Yeah, that's.
Twenty thousand.
Yes.
But I heard it covered Spillman and Lexington this year, obviously it's the last next year because we don't have that, it's a cost.
Thank you. Uh machine and equipment, we're moving down by twenty-five hundred dollars on the LIC side, um. And those are the only five categories on the LIC side. So it's pretty simple ones. Local roads and streets.
And that's enough if we need to put new tires on the bike. Use.
Needs two now.
That should fill up. Uh LRS, local road and streets, we get a little bit of income um from the state and local for the LRS. And we put ten thousand dollars into street repairs, and we're not changing that until next year. So that brings us to MVH. MVH is our motor vehicle highway account. Um this is one that Guy uses a lot, and it's work that is done on the streets, it generally comes out of this account. Um for the zoning, we have moved this portion up, this is Robert's pay. Um so we saw the decrease on the general side, we see the increase on the MVH side. County superintendent, um it went down a little bit on that side, and we're, that's because of George, George's salary adjustments.
Can I just make one comment, sure, in regard to all salary and wages?
Yes.
The twenty twenty-four budget was not adjusted for what was approved in the salary ordinance, because that comes at the beginning of the year.
Yeah.
And so the pluses and minuses aren't necessarily reflective of. An anticipated reduction or increase. Uh it's basically pointing out the fact that uh. That we didn't adjust it uh for when the salaries and ordinances were uh wages were approved. Uh however, I will say, George's work, thank you very much. Um we're trying to uh these uh these helped us get better estimates for twenty twenty-five. This is where we anticipate. Uh the salaries and ordinance is to be approved.
And so to piggyback on that, uh it was, the salary ordinance, we're done in the past after the budget. Which we're trying to move that in the other directions, so we can have very solid estimates for the salary in the budget. And that's why we're doing the salary ordinance a little bit earlier this year compared to years previous. Are we good?
Yes.
Good. Other workers, this is Bob, our new worker, uh that's uh uh three hundred seventeen. Social Security, Medicare, uh looks like George's due that by maybe six bucks per. On MVH side, again, up by twenty-three sixty-six, reflective of this year or next year's anticipated costs. Unemployment insurance. Stay the same. Employee health insurance, we moved up by a hundred and fifty dollars, so this is the way you're saying, and salt, thirty-five hundred dollars. Uh that is completely dependent on the weather. Last year, I don't think we used very much sand salt at all. Um next category, small tools, we kept that same. Street materials, we moved that up by five hundred twenty-five dollars. Street signs, we cut the same. Fuel and tires, we kept the same. The training fees on MVH side, we kept the same, twenty-two fifty. Now engineers and surveys, we have increased by twenty thousand. I want everybody to put asterisks next to this, because we're gonna come back and revisit this one. Building repairs, we've cut the same. Equipment repairs, we've kept the same. Street repairs, same. Tree removal and trimming is another one I wanted to talk about a little bit tonight. Guy, have you spoken with the trimming people about implementing that process? Have we talked about?
I have, and everybody is so busy that they're, get back with us, is what I was told. Cause I've checked with three different ones.
The reason I'm bringing that up is because uh the ten thousand two hundred seems like a lot on MVH side for this, and. Considering that I don't remember ever spending any money on the tree trimming and removal I wanted to talk about, I just think we could get some kind of a plan in place. To do that, because I think the lake could use a little bit of roaming.
Yeah, the reason it was on there is just in light of. Damage, we perform a lot of residents, but the trees need to turn. Uh we had one resident in particular. That went to play specifically out at every meeting, and so we added this to the budget for this year. We also were unaware, and as we all are, we don't know when the storms are coming, and when there's so much that the tree companies have to deal. Uh they have really been more on emergency response. So my personal opinion, based on where we were a year or two years ago, is that we need to keep it. But I will defer to council.
Molly?
Yes.
I'll make a comment on this, since we're opening it up a little bit. I think it's very important to keep that in there, that piece in there, as we discussed, fire. Emergency equipment needs to have clear pass, so Guy's plan, what is it, Guy, ninety? It's a nine feet of fifteen, the fifteen, the, oh yeah, it's the, it's the travel, because of the garbage. So we need to keep this on there and keep it on the forefront. So we can put the fan plan in place, the guys discussed about breaking the lake out into certain sets, segments. Going through, having a company clear out that segment. Next year, they're moving on to the next segment. By the time they make it around the lake, it's cleaned up, stuff from. Three, four years ago, depending on how big the segments are made.
And I did have that bomb that, so whatever we, Guy, the bomb on, he would be more happy with that. Our biggest problem is we need to brush more. Or something.
I don't know what that.
Technology, when it works, it's great, when it's pleasant, it's.
So I think it's a, I think it's a good solution for all the brushing, you could just pile up the Captain George's. Right?
We all come from the bottom fire, there you go.
So that's something we can talk about, um.
Yeah, so let's keep it, and then we'll keep it on an action list for just street survey.
So, uh next one is catch cases and culprits. These are uh really drainage issues around the lake. Uh we've kept that the same. Other services and charges, we moved it up to fifteen hundred. Machine and equipment, what is zero, or we have two different machines, capital out, one hundred three thousand. And that actually brings us to the end of MVH. Is there any questions?
Now, you had just said engineering and surveys, we can go back to, you want to do that now, or?
I'm gonna finish up all these.
Okay, thank you.
Next, to major roads, toll road, um zeros across the board, we're not doing anything there. Continuing education, same thing, zeros across the board. No revenue, no expenses, so nothing. Moving around with those ones. Uh even with capital, same tax. That is uh something that we get uh from the state once a year. Uh so we took that out. So yeah, I I I'm gonna look at. Where you go to them, yeah. So I think we do actually get a revenue for that, so. Alright, next, this brings us to tree recap. This is a big one. Uh attorneys fees, twenty-five hundred, we're keeping the same. Engineers and surveys, we're adding uh ten thousand to that one uh on the CCD side. Professional services, we're moving that out to zero, because we shouldn't have any professional services going.
So with that, I'm sorry, Nathan, we need to remove that account.
Which one?
Uh no, okay, thank you. Keep going, street.
Um a lot of, a lot of the CCD was, is reflective of our decision to pause in our road.
No, on attendance.
I would want to recognize that. Street repair, we have decreased by two hundred thousand, because next year we are not doing a road project, a major road project. So we are going to be looking at major savings on the CCD side, and that is going to be used for a twenty twenty-six project. And that's playing for that. So that's why that adjustment is so big right there. Uh economic development tax is the next one. We have only money in the street repairs line item, and we have not changed those figures as well. So that brings us um to the end of all the adjustments that we have made on all the tax-ledged accounts here, clearly. Do we have any questions about any of the adjustments we've made? If not, next, I'm gonna go over the. Kind of macro level look at each account from SBOA sites. You can see our expenditures, our balances, our revenue. And what's to be expected at the end of the year. If you guys don't have any questions, but we just reviewed, I'll ask Robert to bring up my next slide.
To George? Uh just one quick comment, uh Nathan, I don't know if I can do it at the end of this week, definitely early next week, we'll get together. And fine tune this uh salary wages taxes per.
Yes.
Uh and make sure that we are totally together in the right funds. But I'm after to have the buckets there.
Yeah.
And then as we get specific with with our salary ordinance, we have a comment.
Yeah, me and you and Dan are gonna have to sit down and and go over all these numbers, and input them with our final numbers into the SBOA. For our adopted paperwork that we'll produce for October. Yeah, one one more meeting should, yes, finalize the salary wage budget.
Okay, thanks.
What's the next slide?
It's like, I've got a cap. Five and cap.
Bear with me.
Did anybody have any additional questions or comments? I feel like we did an issue went along, I don't know if that was your intention. And any?
Uh just a reminder that the last one that Nathan discussed, the estimate. As you were running.
As you were running for the memorandum of understanding, if you were gonna.
Oh, okay.
Pay ten thousand to for the NIPSCO stuff.
Yeah, that was nice that that was in the workbook. It was like, okay, I get it now.
Yeah.
If you just pull up the file, it's the SBOA.
No, I didn't.
Well, he just. Meeting packet, I said it's like five, it's the one.
There we go. So I've color coded these. So this is what the form looks like with SBOA, state order accounts, what SBOA stands for. So as you look at the top here, this is the rainy day form. If you scroll down. There we go. Mine stays up there. If you scroll down, look. Line nine. Is our anticipated balance at the end of this year, one hundred twenty seven thousand. Blue is balance. We are not having any expenditures or any revenue coming into this account. So the operating balance on line eighteen, if you go down. Is the same sort of projected balance at the end of next year is the same at the end of this year. So there's no money coming in or coming out. So that's the rainy day. Go to the next one, please. And this is major moves. Uh same thing on this one. If you go to line nine, the estimated balance at the end of this year is ninety nine, six thirty two. No money coming in, no money coming out. Budget year twenty twenty five, line eighteen, same amount. So there's no movement either way on that one. LRS, next one. You go down to line nine, this is our estimated balance at the end of this year, sixteen thousand one ninety eight. You go down to the next part, you'll see the green. Green is for revenues. We are anticipating next year uh miscellaneous revenues of ten thousand three ninety four. If you go down, the total expenses is ten thousand, and that's how they come up uh with. The uh. The balance is the same, well, it's plus, it's plus three hundred ninety four dollars because uh we have three hundred ninety four dollars more. Um in revenue than we have in expenditures. So on this account, we're plus three hundred ninety four dollars at the end of next year. All right, next, cumulative capital, cigarette tax. You go down to line nine, this is our anticipated balance. Budget twenty five, line nineteen fourteen, this is our anticipated revenue. The green, these uh. That's five ninety three. The operating balance at the end of next year is sixty four ninety nine. And that equates to a plus five hundred ninety three dollars on the cigarette tax account. Next one, continuing education. Line item nine, this is our balance at the end of this year, four thousand twelve dollars. Next year, we have total revenues coming in of nine hundred dollars. No expenses going out, so that is a plus nine hundred on this account at the end of next year. And I wrote the pluses at the top of the pages. I wish I could have put it at the bottom of the left side space. The general account, this is our most active account. And at the. Number nine, line item nine, you'll see this is our anticipated balance at the end of this year. This is after our forty seven thousand dollars of additional appropriation. If you scroll up just a little bit, Robert. Right there, you can see the forty seven thousand dollars of additional appropriation. You can see the necessary expenditures for the rest of this year are two seventy seven. And that brings our estimated balance at the end of this year, three seventy six eighty twenty two. The next line for twenty twenty five, we have a property tax. Property tax of one hundred ninety one thousand four hundred. Um we also have our miscellaneous revenues for this account of two hundred and thirty three thousand three hundred ninety seven. That brings our total revenues for the budget of twenty twenty five is expected four hundred and twenty four thousand seven fifty seven. You go to the next line, you will see our total expected expenses for twenty twenty five, four hundred and twenty one thousand. That leaves a plus three thousand and nineteen dollars expected at the end of next year. Any questions about that? No, okay. The general is a little bit more active, obviously. There's a few more things coming in and out. So it took a little bit of time to really break down and look at this and. Um figure out exactly how it's gonna work out, hopefully.
Nathan, could you just help me understand uh on the two columns at the, at the bottom, line eighteen of any of the funds? Uh what is the difference between advertised amount and adopted amount?
Uh does not have any property taxes included.
In the. Okay.
At the left side does have a property tax because some of these funds don't get property taxes. So they have. Two sides. So if a fund does get property tax, we can fill it in on this website where you can fill it in. And if we don't have any property taxes, we won't see it there. We go off the right state.
But like the general division, the general fund is an example uh that has property tax income that will come into it, correct? And that'll add to that.
The property tax levy is one hundred ninety one thousand four hundred. Now the expected property taxes, they're gonna come into that account.
Okay.
The property tax levy is at the bottom, if you go all the way down to the bottom, property tax revenue. All the way down, Robert, a little bit. So that's the property tax rate. That's the net assessed value.
At uh three hundred seventy nine thousand.
No, keep scrolling down a little bit more, Georgie. Right there.
Okay, so you're. Point zero five.
Okay, okay, yeah.
And that equates to one hundred ninety one thousand four hundred for this account. When the property taxes come in, it gets split between five accounts. So all the property tax, like it doesn't give a hundred more. So that's why it is um.
The uh the adopted column is uh. Can you be sure? Because we haven't, we haven't adopted the budget yet. We're only looking at the advertised amount. Once, once we adopt the budget, then that column gets filled.
Okay.
So I think it's just missing.
All right. What, what I was really looking at, um this has a positive cash flow. Through all the accounts, which we history, recently we've been concerned about our cash flow and. And overspending. We, we have it back in check.
Yes.
Uh but we, we also don't have a road project this year, which takes a big bite.
Yep.
And almost. Am I getting, I'm sorry.
You get a little heavy, yourself.
All right, that's the problem I have, you know.
All right, next one, economic development income tax. Line nine, you'll see our anticipated balance at the end of this year. Budget twenty twenty five, thirty eight thousand dollars worth of revenues. Twenty twenty five expenses, twenty three six, which leaves us a plus fourteen thousand four hundred in this account. Um and our uh expected balance of one hundred seventy one thousand four sixty five at the end of next year. Local income tax. Line item nine, our balance at the end of this year, seventy nine thousand three oh one. Revenues, ninety five thousand for next year. Expenses sixty three thousand seven hundred, which leaves us plus thirty one thousand three hundred. Next one, cumulative capital development. Line item nine, our expected balance at the end of this year, fifty four thousand fifty five. Expected revenues, one hundred eighty two thousand seven eighty three. Total expenses, thirty two thousand five hundred, which leaves us plus one hundred and fifty thousand two eighty three. This is the account that we will be saving the most money and will be saving savings for the road project for the next year.
Twenty twenty six.
Twenty twenty since yesterday. All right, which brings us to the last one, motor vehicle highway. Line item nine, you'll see our estimated balance, two seventy one, one twenty eight. Total revenues for budget twenty twenty five of one hundred and twenty four thousand six fifty one. All expenses. For twenty twenty five of one hundred and forty three thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars. That leaves us in the negative eighteen thousand eight sixty three. So this is the one that I would like to talk to everybody about, and I actually got, once I built the stuff out this afternoon, Brett called me. That I've been asking about um the MBH fund and why we're running over. And he had some concerns, some valid concerns, and we wanted to figure out what was causing this overrun. And that beach, so we used Dan's workflow. We pulled it up, we tracked the expenses, biggest expenses. Of the MBH fund are Guy and Bob's pay. The second one is engineering and surveys. So our question that came up is. Would it be possible to move some of the engineering survey money from the MBH side of things? Because we increased the MBH, I said with asterisk next to it, go back to that one. We increased that side of the budget on MBH engineers and surveys by twenty thousand dollars. That put us into the negative on MBH fund. So the thought process is, can we take that twenty thousand dollars that we added to the MBH side? And can we move that over to the CCD side and use. Um that money in the CCD engineering survey side to pay for whatever engineers and surveys be done. If we can do that, that way we would have, all of our funds would be balanced. Furthermore than that, all of our funds, we would be running a surplus. So the question that we came up with, Dan, is can we move these. This extra twenty thousand dollars that we were trying to add to the engineers and surveys on the MBH side? Can we add that twenty thousand dollars on the CCD side? Because we're already running such a big surplus on the CCD side. So that makes sense.
Yeah, I, I understand the question. The uh. There are several alternatives uh that could budget the work that's uh scope for the engineering services. Uh line item, just, just so everybody's on the same page, what that. What that includes is we're required to, to do our Pazer assessment on an annual basis. And supply that to the state in order to qualify for the CCMG uh projects. So. Uh that, that cost is in there. Uh also, uh we know by virtue of the work that we've done. By the road committee and uh the experience that we've all had as residents, we've got some drainage. Uh truffle spots on the lake. Um the one that uh we will, that's, that's come front and center for the twenty twenty six project. Is uh just north uh on West Clear Lake Drive, or just south of the uh. Uh the Out Club on West Clear Lake Drive. It's a well-known um. Uh low, low-lying area of place uh of those garages. So. In this money is to, while we're pausing on the, on the project in, in and of itself, is to. Uh develop concepts to address that drainage issue. Okay. So that's the scope of work that's included. Um so it's uh road-related. CCD is. An alternative, however, I don't think it's the best choice because. It would leave less money to go towards the twenty twenty six project. So in other words, we would. Have to tailor back the amount of road uh that we addressed in twenty twenty six. However, there's other alternative funds. That can um deal with road-related improvements. Um. And so it's like major moves is one that can deal with uh road-related. Um projects, and I know we haven't funded any expenses against that, you know. Um uh any of the economic development remaining um is an alternative. Um the reason, however, that uh. We left this, uh Guy and I left it and I, and Bert, we left it in the motor vehicle uh highway. Knowing that we have a surplus there that could cover the overage. It's, it's a. Single uh event, no recurring, uh such that it's gonna continue to degrade the. Um surplus. And we felt it was uh um more. Uh a fund that is more uh geared towards this, this issue that were uh uh current, that's occurring. So. And that's, I'll leave it open for discussion.
And that's more important than making sure all the funds are balanced and have a surplus. And in addition to that, I'd like to have a better understanding, like George alluded to, that. Every department, every employee, every council member, it has been stressed to that we need to reduce costs. And if you take a look at the increase in engineering and surveys. Without a major road project between those two funds that Nate just discussed, we're going up one hundred and fifteen percent. Uh and no major, and no major road project. And all, everybody else is cutting, and you can see it. As we're going through here, that those were diligent, and they were actually taking it and stuff. But then to see a hundred and fifteen percent increase when we don't have a major road project for engineering and surveys concerns me.
One time, one time fifteen percent.
You increase. One by twenty thousand, one for the engineering and survey. And the other by ten. And the twenty twenty four, it was point six, and the increase is fifty six K, where we.
He was talking about the increase in engineering and surveys on motor vehicle highway thirteen twelve.
Yep.
Is that correct?
Yeah, CCD and CD.
And engineering.
Yeah.
So the CCD needs. The CCD is, is based on the actual cost to do the application of the twenty points for the twenty twenty six. Project. So we were underestimating, we were under. For the same thing, yeah. So the, the other, the other lesson that we uh learned and have put into this process is that um. We are leveraging, we are monitoring month to month, the actual expenses in each one of these funds. And we have uh this year performed an estimate to complete for the balance of uh months in which we don't have actuals. So that we could use that cumulative uh value in each of these charge numbers to understand. What is the actual expense that's occurring in twenty four? And make that the basis in many of these um numbers for the number in twenty twenty five. So. Yeah, it increased, but that's the cost of doing that project.
Anything?
That wasn't necessarily.
Yeah, and just to add on that too, and if I'm being correct, is some of this is implementing the background of the road committee. And residents, as far as having, you know, all the Pacers done. And having all this information before we do a road project. Is that also?
Absolutely. Uh the road committee is involved. In these.
Since we didn't have that initially for some of our road projects, the road project that we completed.
So put another way, any road project, for example, the twenty twenty four road project. Had expenses either before in engineering and surveys and preparing and qualifying for the brand. That wasn't totally built in, but now is, but just because you have a road project in twenty six, you're still getting some expenses in twenty five. And that's really what this number represents.
Yes. So those were the questions that we had. Uh even if we don't do any adjustments, that fund will still be expected. That a balance of two hundred and fifty two thousand, two hundred and sixty five. Just so we're all clear. If we, if we leave that go and runs at a negative eighteen thousand. At the end of twenty twenty five, we expect the balance to still two hundred and fifty two thousand, two hundred and sixty five. Which for the entire year, total expenses for the year twenty twenty five is six hundred and ninety five thousand fifty two dollars. With the ten. Our total revenue is expected at eight hundred seventy seven thousand seventy dollars. That is a positive one hundred and eighty two thousand and twenty six dollars for the budget year twenty twenty five. So we've made some really great strides, I think. We've really. So we've made some really great strides, I think, we're really um moving. In the right direction as far as funding the road projects, funding all the different needs of all the different departments. Um, and I'm pretty happy with this. Budget, we obviously need to sit down and make some adjustments still before we finalize it, um, but I feel pretty confident. With that, that's pretty much I'm I'm done with my presentation.
I love your answer. Yeah, you want to try and follow up? I mean, follow up with another way of speaking. If we have alternative funds, I think the work is important. Engineering is expenses, uh, and I'm sorry, Todd's in the room. Are not are not really value-added portion of a road project, what's value value add is the amount of distance of road that you construct. But unfortunately, the engineering has to be done, so it's a it's a necessary expense. Um, so where we where we fund that expense, we have alternatives.
And I think we should take them, going back to what George has been. Very adamant about is getting us to the point where we can protect each of the funds. And like you said, there are different areas, different funds can be used for different things, so if that's true. And if everybody is trying to get to that same goal of preparing for the future. Then I don't see why we don't make that adjustment. And have those monies taken out of the CCD versus DMTH, there's already. Engineering that's coming out of here, I'm just saying move your increases. From that engineering and survey fund to the engineering and survey fund where there's a large surplus instead of having. The surplus.
There is no surplus in CCD. In fact, I would love to get rid of that engineering that's in there.
The one that you increased by thirty or increased to thirty, there's no. Extra funds and that's not the one that I'm saying.
The CCD fund, which is where the CCMG profits are paid for. That is the minimum amount of engineering required to prepare an application uh. For twenty twenty six project. The MBH fund is where we increased uh.
You increased twenty. The twenty K and the ten K was CCD. For engineering and surveys, but the same thing. The CCD fund.
It would be.
The CCD fund has a positive balance, I'm I'm trying to let you answer the question, but I don't think you understand what I'm saying, probably.
So I think.
What I'm saying is that one of the twenty thousand that you have on. Four zero two zero zero one three one two point zero 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 was increased from twenty thousand to thirty thousand. And in that year. I'm saying that I would like to see the increase that was put in the MBH. On here versus the MBH. The MBH will then be a balanced fund with actually a little bit of a surplus unless you want to add like two grand or whatever the. The extra number is that it keep it as a balance. Versus growing one of the major accounts into the negative year over here. Because, like you said, each fund. Is able to reach, each fund is able to pay out on certain things and if the engineering survey is there. And we have a large surplus because we do, correct me if I'm wrong, eh?
Large surplus.
Yes, since CCD it shows a hundred and fifty plus thousand, correct?
So we've got one, we've got one account. That's negative eighteen and we've got one account that's a hundred and fifty. We've got two sub-accounts that can go to the same things and we've increased one by ten and one by twenty. By increasing one by thirty versus ten and having a net neutral going across the MBH. Then you've got all funds as a positive.
Can we take the twenty thousand dollars out of MBH and add it into major moves? Or another category of payed engineer and that way. Balance that we each. We can move that expense with different. Uh, appropriation. Pick what will bring its terminal condition.
So if we could pay. Brett's Brett's asked is to move it to CCD and that would not be in the best interest of the town.
That would be, that would not be except for certain things have to be on certain funds.
Okay. And so, um, you know, the road committee did banter around um and made the recommendation to. Skip a year with the express purpose. Of combining the remaining, the and minimize expenditures out of the CCD. Fund so that we could combine two years and get the bigger, more efficient use, uh, bigger bang to the buck. On our road construction project in twenty six. Um. That said, uh, what we don't want, what we need to position ourselves to do is to have a s- uh solution in mind. For um the drainage problem that we have in that road project that we planned for twenty six. The major moves is is a is a reasonable option, uh, the only negative to the major moves is it's a one and done. Uh, there is no more tax levies coming in to major moves, we've kind of isolated it. Similar to a rainy day in the sense that. It's it's money there should we get into a pinch that we could use, um. By leaving it in the motor vehicle highway, um, we can take advantage of what uh is an ETS. An ETC right now in twenty twenty four is an under run to the budgets. And and that could go to offset. The additional expense in twenty twenty five if performance remains similar. Or anything. So that's the full. Debate that happened, you know, between myself and the road committee. Uh, and where we wanted to let this expense lie.
So I think this is a conversation we can continue with me, Dan and George, sit down with Brett if you want to. Come into that meeting or call in or whatever, um, but I think that's something that we can discuss further, not. I don't know if you need to continue discussing right now.
Anybody have anything else for Nathan?
Good job.
Great job, Nathan.
Thanks, Nathan, thanks.
Um, so what I'd like to do, um, I know the audience is thrilled that they've been sitting through the budget far and out, I think they're very well informed, so I would now entertain a motion to open it up for public comment. Any questions?
It's good, guys, don't move.
Um, wait a second.
For a second, that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. So would any of our guests any questions on budget or anything? Anything to protect us, no, no, Kathy. Okay, we we're there we go, so we gave our public an opportunity and Robert, nobody joined on Zoom, did they?
Um, no, apparently Zoom, when they did their update. Evolished the way that we used to start our meeting and the way, only way I compared, that's right, getting onto this through my computer because it's how I usually. Control it, we're recording, so everyone's recording fine right now, but it doesn't look like anyone can get actually get on the meeting right now, we actually have to schedule the meetings, not through the future, not just use the open meeting room.
Okay, so we'll we'll have that as a takeaway.
Yeah.
So since there is no um, no, there are no questions from the audience or comments, I would entertain a motion to close public comment.
I'm moving close to the unit for public comment.
Thank you, George, thank you, second.
I'll say that.
Thanks, Bert, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. So now what I'd like to do is we are now approving our budget, but I would like a motion to move forward with the budget as discussed.
This is George and I propose that we move forward on the uh budget that was presented tonight.
Can I have a second?
Um, with.
With my.
Yeah.
Modification, thank you, Dan.
And I would second.
So we have a a motion and a second to move forward with the budget with the modifications discussed, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Thanks, everybody, okay, we. Have on the agenda to take a break for fifteen minutes to.
Yeah, we have to take a ten-minute break, I need to.
Okay, we'll take a ten-minute break. Seventeen.
I hear a lot of years. Ah, I was. I uh explained it didn't get a. I was guy also people. So Stuben was actually there to follow over and see if Stuben went over or would technically cover Stuben, okay, at the time, I actually got a hold of Aaron and I'm like. Hey, how's that situation going because we we got a text about this, uh. But uh, we never attended, when I talked to Aaron, uh, they were, um. They were going to the eight or eight percent. Well, they eventually recovered. I was, I mean. He's like, okay, okay, I, yeah, I.
The last thing when he went down, I didn't even recover, but I just.
It was like three, three days. I don't know either, but it's like a twenty-foot deep lake and you, Aaron said, we only have two feet of this. That's kind of up in the air if you're talking about all this and you're trying to, it was over. It's sad that I, you know.
No other options.
I don't know, I mean, we stopped.
But I saw them all over, they're still like. I got all over the middle, we got, uh, all the way over by Thompson, uh.
We went out to the channel, I looked it out.
They actually had a level on the other side of hills down and.
We weren't expecting this.
I was, I was literally around my way and then they. Oh.
They were.
They recovered, yeah, they recovered. So and of course, Stuben, we had one as well, after my.
I didn't, I didn't.
I don't know, I don't know if there was any, I mean, Stuben, so plus. All the ones we've got, we got.
Over, over, I mean, Fort Wayne was a little busy in the rivers. They. Murder victim, one was.
Yeah.
Right, one was the other is a gunshot, they they like, that's kind of. But that's how I was. Seeing it, it's like rubber belts, you know. Please never.
Yeah, it's it's. No, I had to.
Do you set a day and then, yeah.
That one was interesting, we were getting tax produced because Stuben was over.
But it happens.
They're not part of our.
We used to do that, we felt it back to her back out day, whenever it was just.
We will count, we're something that's. So you got some neutral aid, you know, support. Pretty bad.
I didn't. Getting it done.
Less than that.
Yeah.
Probably.
Yeah. But that's like green and grass fire.
They're gonna be. There is actually one. So good on my gears.
I'm gonna hurt one with you.
So I I gotta talk to Aaron about that, I wanted to do one of the five, so we'll see if he lets.
Leaves. You know, you're almost.
Chris, I read your name that paper the other day, I forget what the case was.
He's one of the many.
Not everybody here, which I'm.
I I read, but I don't think they don't say all blended up.
Of course you are, you know.
Maybe.
Do not.
First there was.
Okay, okay. Is that, is that true?
Mostly things are.
That, yeah, yeah, it was one. That had a pretty good.
Oh, yeah. Such a disgusting reminder, you know. And if, yeah, she ever get pregnant, have a baby.
Yeah.
I'm waiting on the maternity test. He admitted to it, yeah. He's pretty sure it says kids, so. I don't know, maybe that's what it did, it works, how hard it came. You still have to, you have kids, we have, you know. I think, yeah, I'm waiting on one of the last one of them.
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah. I know, that's why we're like, oh, yeah, we'll keep the two-person hand in there. You know, we would, well, it's straight show, we did.
Wasn't that really mom?
Yeah. Um. Sometimes we get. Many come here. Yeah, so you're.
Well, it was. Okay.
Okay, so like, yeah, I remember those. Robert.
This is gonna stop all the meetings during the year, it's always the same time, so I'll just follow through. And make sure it matches all we've always used.
Go click into the meeting and vice to.
Well.
Due to the results.
Yeah, I'll do your just. But it's weird because every time I try and go on to do the website, like everybody's probably. It says post is already in the meeting and I'm like. I know, we're in the action, like, whatever reason, uh. You can't, I I I follow up, I know, I've heard someone that kind of asked.
Cause there's lots of. Yeah. But these will be deep, I'm surprised. Would have.
And there's a lot of. Well, and I I'll make sure, yeah, cause like, I don't know what the heck is going on right now, I even try to get the information out of that, see if I can just log in that way.
Yeah.
But I keep saying the posters.
Yeah, we're ready.
Alright, real quick.
Just read it to me, well.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and reconvene with the approval of our monthly reports. Um, Nathan has shared the leading minutes and so I would entertain. A motion to approve the minutes from our August twentieth meeting.
This is Bert, I'll make a motion to approve meeting minutes of our office meeting.
Great, Dan, I have a second.
This is Dan, I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Now, Nathan, guess what, you're up again.
All right.
The voucher and warrant.
I'm sticking my own board, and here we go. Uh, voucher runs from August eighteenth through September twenty fourth. Um, there's quite a few transactions this month because I paid all the plan. Uh, commission people and all zoning people plus, um. We have a few other items on here that are. we have a few other items on here that are out of the ordinary. First one probably being my consultant, was NJX Associates. And twenty-six, that one might stand out, that's my consultant that I've been using. Um, and American Legal Publishing is another one, this is for codification. There was two charges on that one, one for the online web, uh, hosting, and then one for the actual publishing. Uh, those are well reflected in there. Uh, we had a economic development, uh, payment of five twenty-five that was also made this month. Uh, the lawyers have come down a bit this month, it wasn't as, uh, high as it been the previous couple of months. Um, so, on the general side, I'm looking for approval for seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and five dollars and three cents. On the sewer side, um, mission, um, kind of came through, that is our lift station monitoring, annual service fee, that's six hundred and twenty-three dollars. We also had our Keystone accounting, uh, come through, that was on the general side too, and on the sewer sites, to see those two charges, Keystone and Voice are my account software. Um, Aqua Flow is also on there, CEM, we do have a couple of pumps that Guy purchased, those are refurbished pumps. So the total on the sewer side I'm asking for is sixty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty-two dollars, seventy-two cents. Total voucher for this month is hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seventy-six cents. Any questions?
And I'm gonna answer. Anybody have questions for Nathan? Could I? Could I entertain an on motion to approve the voucher register as presented?
That's true, and I knew that we accept, that we approved the, uh, the voucher register as presented. This is Brian, I'll second that.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing done, motion carries, thank you so much, Nathan.
Thank you.
Now, we are going to move to new business, and this is going to be Robert, who is going to be presenting, and then we'll need a motion from one of the council members. Robert, if you want to present.
Yep.
And all this was in your packets.
Okay, so, uh, I've, uh, Resolution zero seven five twenty-four. Uh, authorization for execution of release, which by utility easement for Jeffrey Carper under, and. Uh-oh, now you don't normally have this. Nineteen, thank you, um, South Philly Drive, um, they have an existing easement, uh, a grinder along the house, they're gonna, uh, they're requesting to get it moved out of the way for, uh, potentially a new build, uh, and have it placed on the other side of the road, um, on their accessory lot, uh, which would be within compliance of our, our ordinance, our sewer ordinance, within thirty feet of the road itself. Uh. I don't know how, is it just title? That's, okay.
So does anybody have any questions for Robert on this?
All right. Well, so we have the, the signatures of, um, the property rights in the new.
What is, uh, they'll put it there. Question, so, um, Nathan.
The, the part of the motion, we then have action. Any other questions on this for Robert?
Yeah, I was, I don't know if it's this one, particularly for Robert, that I was having difficulty following the, uh, uh, park trail for all the exhibits.
Yeah.
It's just running, running through them.
Oh, that's sideways. Oh, it's all of this. Uh, when you. My is going. Okay, apparently I can't do that. Um. So, right now, exhibit C, which sideways, that is about that. This shows the line going from, uh, South Philly Drive right here, uh, straight to where the grinder is, right here on the property, or it's actually not on the property, then it's in the property. Uh, so this is the existing easement, it shows the, also the neighboring property, um, to them, where they're, there's this on the opposite side of the road, which is ironically what Jeffrey, um, is going to do on his side, it's gonna match this. High pressure line runs here, uh, so the connection would be relatively easy, and then, uh, what would end up happening is they're using the same line to connect into the, the new build when they decide to do that, so they don't have to have a lift station to pop up to the new grinder, which they would open, so. So, the exhibit.
So, that, that's current state.
Yeah.
And, and, um, we're abandoning the, the, uh, the grinder's, uh, station from.
Yeah.
No, they're not abandoning that. That one's being moved, correct?
Well, you know, not abandoning, that one's being completely removed, because the proposed plan, sorry, the proposed plan.
Elevation allows. Well, they need to have a private station.
They don't need to have a private station, but it more likely either be moved, uh, more close to the property line, or be within side of the residence itself. I don't think that's been determined yet, but, but they will have their private station.
So, we're not leaving any town equipment behind, nothing at all.
It has to move for their foundation, because their foundation is actually gonna be on top.
Correct. Thanks.
Sorry.
And, uh, what's like the lines going into the road? For any.
Yeah, I would assume they're just gonna use the existing line that's already connected. Or, well, it's, I haven't actually, it really might be relevant too.
Well, it depends on what their sys, their system's gonna put in, it's gonna be a pressure system to push it up there.
Yeah.
So there's already that line, it'll just have to come, be detached from the main, and a link made to come back into the main from the lift station. There.
Yeah.
So that's the, that's the proposed, uh, easement, and what is the right right way to that?
Uh. Uh. Yeah. I think it's like twenty, thirty feet in that area. Uh. For the, then, uh, this is off of their survey where I pulled it, but I, I zoomed it in, so I don't have the full thing.
Did you consider that, and where are you located? Just the location of this grinder.
Oh, the grinder is auto, right?
Yeah, there, there's no room to.
But the easement, in the size of the easement, you're going from road edge, or did you consider any of the road that I played?
I think it's known from the movie.
Heard, uh, heard the survey, the road edge and the property line are the same area, yeah, so this is the edge of the right away, it's supposed to be the edge of the road currently. So it's actually measured for.
Okay, also, there is no right way.
Not, not that we can place that else.
Okay.
But the right way is from here to here, and I believe it's like twenty feet.
Little edge to edge.
Edge to edge, yeah.
Any other questions?
And you have a permanent and a temporary.
There are.
Identified there, is that, is that labeled consistent with the words?
Yes. Yeah, might put this. So a solid permanent containing square feet, which you, uh, has marked out, and then a solid temporary of a hundred and seventy-five.
And I'm gonna see if it was, was there a line that I would.
Uh, initially when I gave Mike one, but I didn't, I didn't see my legend there for when he sent it back for its measurements, so at least I make an update.
Yeah, well, just for, right.
I usually have, because I put the color code too.
Yeah, the color code, it's usually on the bottom side of that.
Yeah. Yeah, no, uh, must be when Mike put in the numbers that they got a lot of, and I didn't realize that, so, I can fix.
Any other questions on the resolution of zero seven dash two zero two four? I'll entertain a motion on this. Thank you. Zero seven dash.
I would, uh, I would make a motion to, um, so, as written with, uh, stage changes to having legend to exhibit C. Resolution zero seven two oh two four.
Okay, we have a motion, and can I have a second?
This is Bert, I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing done, motion carries. So you guys can follow up with Robert.
Uh, I'll leave. But you have to leave it, you guys say.
Now you get a bigger more fun. All right, Robert, if you want to move forward with resolution number zero eight dash two zero two four.
All right, so, zero eight dash twenty twenty-four, um, uh, application being made by John and, you know, Pritchard, uh, at five ninety-two. Thank you, uh, easily like. Or five fifty.
I'll see, gosh, you might draw on your salary.
Um, just going down to the exhibit, um. Close to part, keep part. It's gonna be a mess, apparently, I'm not allowed to. Move these, okay, so exhibit C, um, so this is an existing, uh, um, uh, line that's actually just gonna be, it goes out the smart, technically, right now, or something like that, and it's just gonna be removed and put in place of our existing, and we're just gonna make it smaller, and it's, the new grinder's gonna be placed within thirty feet of the road, road edge. Uh, there is a right away, it appears, based off of the survey, but the grinder is gonna be placed just outside of it in the property still. Um, and then, um, this one was actually provided by Star Homes, um, but, uh, per the agreement, they do have a temporary and a permanent.
Uh, it's not fatal.
And it's not, not, uh, you mentioned the other one. So typically I do them, just to match what we've always done, and but they actually supplied this one for me, so I can.
This one, we are abandoning town equipment.
No, no, this one, we're moving it again, um, I think they have enough fall, or they don't need, uh, well, I don't know if they're gonna be putting in a system.
They should have enough fall.
So maybe look, I believe too.
I read in the word, we're abandoning. Somewhere. Somewhere that may have been just a carryover.
Yeah, I did see that somewhere, but I don't remember where it was at.
Uh, okay. And I didn't read, um, once Mike sent it back to me. Sewer is up, um, all right, I'm, let's see, this. Probably advance.
In the, in three, four, fifth, where. Abandoning.
Yeah.
Station control.
Shouldn't then just the existing lateral.
Yeah, not to control, well, yeah, not to. All right. So adding, um, more clear temporary and permanent to the exhibit and, um, modifying the, whereas to only include the lateral. Right, for guide. Um, unless you guys just wanna fix it, and then we go to the, to next meeting. Uh, I don't think, I don't know how, I, I don't even have, uh, an I O P waiting for the.
As a rather than, in that, in, in regards than to that fact, that the way it, you're correcting, let's see the final.
Okay.
Yeah, since you don't have an I O P, I think that's absolutely. So, Nathan, we will move resolution number zero eight dash two zero two four to the October meeting agenda under all this.
Got it.
Please.
And then they add the, they add the easement dimensions and whatnot too.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, so Star had them do it. Um, I'm, probably, because typically what I do to kind of help the process along and give an idea of what Guy wants, um, is I put that together, uh, and I send it to the applicant, like I did with carpenters, and say, this is, this is what we're looking at within the rights, the ordinance. And usually guys just adopt it into the D-Dark, uh, Star actually gave me one, which. They found that.
Thank you, thanks. Okay, we have no unfinished business this evening, so now we'll move to the monthly reports. Nathan, you're up with financial report, please.
So, back to me, um, my financial reports, fund appropriation, reports are on file. Um. Robert, if you could quickly, Nitsco refund, I want to talk about that.
Is that a separate document?
Yes. Uh, right, uh, right, that was right there. So, uh, I've been working with my consultant, starting back in July, and we ran an audit on all of our accounts, and we they're working on getting this rebate from Nitsco, this occurred when they did the street light, the actual light bulb switches. This was back during COVID almost, and they issued us a refund for this twenty-three thousand dollars, I was sitting, um, in an account, and working with my consultant, I figured out the process to get to apply for this rebate, and now, I didn't talk about it, because I wasn't sure. But now that it's here in, in the bank, I want to bring this to you guys, uh, twenty-three thousand, fifty-seven dollars, uh, that's going in the general account. Um, so, with that being said, I would also like to continue working with my consultant. Um, I talked to Molly about possibly adding him onto the budget next year, so I don't have to continue asking for work, not to exceed five hundred dollars, or not to exceed a thousand dollars. Um, my consultant did eighty dollars an hour, I did pay him this month, uh, for eleven hours for eighty-four dollars, but I would like to continue working with him. Um, so that is one request I have from, uh, from my consultant, the counselor.
Great job, I, I mean, I think just filled it into budget, so you're not always having to come back, and we discussed that earlier, um, if anybody's opposed, I think.
Yeah, I, I would. Suppose. What's, yeah, I, I recommend to put it in the budget, along with, we need to talk about a little H R money, for that consultant, um, and just put it in, so that we don't have to keep doing resolutions here at the council meeting.
And great job on the refund.
Yeah, 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 so. It took about three months, but I didn't want to talk about it too much, so it's actually here, so.
You're smart, I promise, over deliver, that's what we love.
I have a follow-up to that, that's great news, uh, does this, uh, allow us to have excess funds in the general, uh?
Yeah, those five twenty-three thousand dollars.
And would that give us an opportunity to put a little fat in their any day fund before year end?
Which is. Yeah, that's something we can all discuss.
There's a formula for that.
Right.
I'll work with you, we'll calculate what we can do, I think Dan will touch base with you on it, and, uh, present it to the council before. Sounds amazing, but, but I sure love to. Absolutely, thanks.
Thank you, Nathan. Chris, you're up.
Uh, so month of August, um, worked a total of two hundred and five hours, uh, had one thousand one hundred and seventy-three hours uh, mileage on the Durango, and we had initial twenty and a half hours in the boat. Uh, we investigated four cases within the town, uh, sheriff's office investigated three cases within the town, and eight cases within the township of Clear Lake. Uh, we had fourteen traffic violations, fifteen boat violations, one arrest, uh, zero golf cart violations, uh, seven vehicle inspections, and ten golf cart inspections. For the cases, the, uh, police department had two agency assists, one was with the sheriff's office, and one was with PD, uh, and one suspicious complaint, and one O W I arrest, um, sheriff's office within the town had one property over scratch, one little project, and one suspicious. And then in the township, they had one agency assist, one juvenile problem, three property over crashes, one medical, and one death investigation. Uh, the radar signs that were ordered are in, they're in the garage right now, I'm going to wait until the road project is done before I get on, or ask Guy to get them put up, I know he is extremely busy, so, but they are here. Or ask Guy to get them put up, I know he is extremely busy, so, but they are here. Uh, and then Alexa poll update on that, um, I had met through Zoom meetings with my Lexi poll representative. Three times, um, we have basically set up a schedule that every Monday evening I will meet with them via Zoom meeting. Uh, start working on the project, so we've actually got that up and going, or in the works. Um, timetable, uh, which I discussed with them, we've got about a hundred and seventy policies we're gonna go through. Uh, I told them I want everything done and ready to go before Memorial Day, uh, that we're gonna be working on it over the winter timeframe, so I'm not. Uh, maybe we got about, somewhere between five to seven policies we're gonna go through every week. Um, get those tailored for the town of Clear Lake, so we should have it actually done sometime by. Probably in April, he's got some extra days filled in in case I'm on vacation or he's on vacation or something like that, but it should be up before we actually be busy again. Let's see update on that.
That's great, it's Chris.
Dear season, dear.
Yeah, did it ever stop, really? Anybody have any questions for Chris? Okay, so Brent, you're up with the fire department, please.
All right. All right. The town of Clear Lake, including usual aids, had a total of ten calls. The Clear Lake Township had a total of three calls. Areas of concern are note, there was a decrease in regional calls from July to August, seventeen in July versus thirteen. In August, the town of Clear Lake saw increases in usual aids from three in July to six in August. The town of Clear Lake decreased various calls from the lake from nine in July to four in August. And Clearly Township's total calls reduced from five to three. Uh, regional totals were slightly higher than twenty twenty three, we were twelve versus thirteen. Oh, and I will change the top section since twenty twenty three, that should have been twenty four.
Oh, that Chris is free now.
And one other note of interest for the community, we're made aware this week that the Fremont Fire Department. Will be doing a show and tell with the dive team at the Marina this Saturday. Between four and five P M and it is open to the public. Um, the last time I came out and did one of these exercises. Was over by the Marina and there was a lot of public, um, public input. And was going to ask if we can have a reach, but we're sent out on that as well. And that's it for the fire department.
That's great, thanks. So Robert, you're up with the zoning report, if you can.
All right, um, so I issued eight I L Ps, I think forty five for the year, no. I know the numbers don't match up to my report, but that's because it's at the end of last. Half of that's one, um, and then I O P is one hundred part of three. Uh, you can see up there my numbers went up a little bit from last month as far as in progress I O Ps. Um, but we only have one in the twenty twenty three and that one's almost done, so, um. You shouldn't have to worry about that one either. So then everything will be up to date there, um, one thing to note, you guys will see around the lake, um, I have done a total of seven demolition permits throughout the lake. Uh, two of which are demo only for pending I O P applications for approval, uh, with one of them. One of them both being demo and I O P, so. Uh, I'm waiting for I O Ps to come through still, that's how long. Uh, and that number's gonna continue to blow up, uh, but it is the highest number in the past sixty years for demolition, so, uh. Yeah, it's gonna be an interesting call for you guys, sorry. Um, we're gonna make sure that, you know, of course, they're. Keeping a peace between the neighbors as well, so. Just let me know if you see anything. Uh, the B C A meeting for attending is canceled, do the lineup business, uh, plan commission meeting coming up, it is eleven four. Uh, just like last month, we still have a couple of U D O post changes, um. Uh, they will be available for public input, uh. Uh, about the middle of next month, um. So keep your eye out for that, I had one minister subdivision. Being did, and then, um, I did something. But I want to show you guys, apparently this is just not wanting to play a lot today. Um, so the zoning dashboard. Um, that is available, I'll get. As search function, and I was gonna try to show you, but it's pretty long again. And it doesn't want to play. So if you, and then we're gonna try to make sure that this is updated more frequently, so that makes sure that the data is, um. Available to the public, not through the website. But if you go to the website, you go to the metrics tab, now you won't go all the way out annoying. Uh, and you'll actually be able, I don't know how quick I can do this. But you'll be able to go, uh, look at the metric, come on. Play. I know, I, something must be going on today, we've got this. All right, so. This T S M guessing. Okay. So you'll get this when you download that open command.
It's gotta have a identified name.
Never mind, yeah, so, um, on the zoning dashboard, when you download it, it's gonna be, it's gonna be the main dashboard, you'll have two of them. That you can pick from, but it's always open, the zoning one, because the other one's just the plan commission and B C A. Just scroll down to the bottom, not too far to the bottom because it's, it's tight and, um, we can see, you can put the address number of the house that you're looking for to see if a permit's been filed. You can actually get historical data to see if a permit's ever been filed for that property based off of. All the analytical data that we collect on, so, uh, you can see it's in progress, you can see the expiration date of it, uh, so that way, um. That way, if anyone wants to go see if it's up and pulled, they can, they'll be able to do that, so. Gonna try to do it, you know, weekly, um, and then if there's nothing, then obviously I'll just not do it because there would be nothing to update. But, um, it's just, it's just another tool to the public to kind of help, uh, you know. Heard some good questions, so. So and then the only thing is, then as well, no, uh, put N A for no address if you, if you don't think it properly has an address, and I'll pull up, right now there's only three in the whole report. So and it goes back to, I think, twenty nineteen right now, so it's just as it goes, I mean, I'll keep collecting data. Sorry, I was trying to show it, but it didn't. I have not yet. So, uh, I'm going to, I'm going to, uh, I actually just put that together this week, so I'm working on. I I I'm working on everybody, because I was working with Chris before I came in and tried to get him to, so then that way it's all there for everybody and then hopefully all of the board members. Can go in and look at the data as well, that's the point, so. He will be added to it for sure. That's it.
Any questions for Robert?
Just a comment, I think, Robert. Fabulous job, uh, you touch most all departments. And add value, I would be thankful, so I'm just saying, appreciate that immensely. Um. Guys, street department will call over the measurements that have helped, they're helping us with some issues there. Uh. Sewer, um, those streets, sewer with the, um. G I S developments, fabulous job there, Jenny talked about. Uh, where we, you have enough data?
Uh, yeah, and apparently checked out just on my friend and I, uh, just felt was able to get all the road data input. Although it's recent, I would say go to Shumali a little bit today, um, but, uh, I worked with. I took the end for you guys to have my access, so I'm actually gonna send out an email tomorrow, so that way you can access on the. The viewer side instead of the editable side, so then that way you go in there and do all the tabs, but yeah, that is in there. She, she is able to, um, expiate everything, kick it out like you wanted. Uh, so, uh, yeah, that's, it's moving on.
So are we done with the contract still?
No, um, I, uh, the last, I talked to her last week, I think, um, Rick was supposed to come up, he had some. He falls as.
He was here last.
Friday, you, you were supposed to hear Friday.
Yes, there's your question.
So, um, there was that, and then there's one, there's one little, um. Thing that you and me, I need to talk about, so, um, to see where we want to move with that on one of the other scopes of work, so. Um, right now, um. Unless that changes right now, they're pretty much done with all the fieldwork. So the rest.
Data, sir, they're under running M P P. You know, they're getting like, we're almost eleven K into the top of it.
Yes.
Yep, and, uh, the, the funding from that runs out this year. And, uh. I'd like to make sure we got to get back those A R P funds. It's important for us to know where they're going, like, what are the projects we want. The yellow line.
Yeah, and that, that, like I said, I'll discuss. The question, that's potentially, although. When I talked to her, so.
And up on the end of that, I'm doing a class on October seventeenth for appropriation of A R P funds, I think there's a new. Webinar to make sure all the players go, they need to appropriate all your A R P funds.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you very much, Robert, I appreciate it, and I think. Being able to search by property that'll save a lot of, all of us, some of them calls probably, so.
I will.
All right, God, it's super penance report.
So I had a total of a hundred and ninety and a half on this last month, Bob had forty one hours, mind you, he started at the end of the month. Um, we issued two road cut permits, one demo permit and eight non objection. We had, in sewer department, we had forty two locates, nine alarm recalls. Uh, replaced three grinder pumps, we repaired two and we didn't set any. By screwed up. We did set up pumps, but I don't remember how many. Because that was one last first shot. Um, so we have, uh, ten set up, five still boxed and three waiting on repair, which. I, after I wrote this, I got quotes back. And we're only waiting on repair at two because one was, is gonna be scrapped. Our average daily flow was seventy three five fifty two. The sewer truck mileage was two hundred and fifty one and the dump truck mileage was a hundred and sixty nine.
Any question on Guy's report before he moves on? Okay, Guy. If you could, um, I'm sorry, Guy, have Jen just, um, change what that setup number is from zero to whatever.
Yeah.
So that way we have the correct number in the files.
Yep.
This way, thank you.
I was doing too many things at one time.
Oh, no, it's okay, it's fine, yes.
Very correct, and replace the detail by report.
Oh.
Good catch.
So, and I have two pumps at, well, I took, sent three more pumps back to C E M when they brought our other ones back. Um. One of the three, the quote was almost five thousand dollars on, so that one was the one that I said was gonna be scrapped out or parted out. So I have a quote for one of them at two thousand sixty four dollars and ninety two cents and another one at. Two thousand six hundred and seventy dollars and ninety cents, and I would like approval to have those brought through repairs.
Or refurbishing. Make a motion on behalf of our great superintendent, uh, to approve the. Repair of two grinders, uh, total price four thousand seven hundred and thirty six dollars.
We have a motion, can we have a second?
This is for outside the net.
Great, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying nine.
All right.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries.
And then, we have been battling getting quotes on replacing sewer truck, I don't know if you want to talk about this, Dan, or do you want me to?
I'm totally here.
So, after a lot of trial and error, I finally ended up with three quotes. It took forever to get everybody on the same page, they wanted to quote the truck, they wanted to sell me that truck we needed. Um, so I have three quotes, one from Stillwell Ford in Hillsdale, Michigan. One from Harold Ford in Angola and one from Jim Smith in Hicksville, Ohio. Um, Stillwell's has come in the lowest at forty nine seven ninety seven. There was about a Ford, a forty five hundred dollar difference between the other two. Um, but then we run into another sign of, we are no longer allowed to order twenty twenty four trucks. Which we cannot do until sometime in October. Now. Which in turn is going to raise the price of the truck somewhere between five and seven thousand dollars. And then I also have the quote for the service body from Kaida Equipment. And the reason I'm going with the same now high body that we have now. The way we have the truck set up works very well for us and we don't want to have to change a bunch of stuff around. And the quote for that was fifty seven thousand for that, and that is a new crane, um, new service body. Um, with some added features that we didn't have on the old one, like work lights that are. Can they move around on the side so we can direct light where we're working, um, that was putting a sprayed in bed liner. In the floor and up onto the sides where we stand on the side of it when we work on things. Uh, and that was also a new snow plow that will be able to be interchanged between, it'll actually go to our dump truck now. But it'll be able to go on both trucks, so if the dump truck goes down, we still have the ability to pass it. So that was all, the snow plow and crane and everything is included. With a service there, it all comes from the same, same shop. And they're the ones that have done both of our dump trucks and the service super truck we have now. So.
Right, Dan?
Uh, yes, and we did take the, our current super truck up to Stillwell's last week and. I was kind of surprised at what they offered us for trading or resale of that truck, which was twelve five. So. And, yes. Any other questions? On that, um, I would like to build receipt with this. With the addition of about five to seven thousand dollars on the truck price, I talked to. Kaida Equipment this evening. And he said, as soon as we can order the truck, order the service body and the price of our service body. Should not change, that quote was still good as of tonight. So.
And when would this, uh, new vehicle be placed in the service?
The, from the date we order the service body. It is approximately sixty days before they would receive the body there and the crane and basically they'll get all the components in. And then they have to assemble the truck. And if I remember right, it was thirty to forty five days assembly. So we're looking at, from the time we place the order, it'll be approximately three months before we have the truck in service.
So that's January.
Well, we're in the middle of ordering truck until October, and who knows how long it'll take us to get the truck.
Well, tell me why, why ordering the service body is contingent on having an order.
Well, once, they're saying, once we order the truck and we know, okay, that it's gonna take them thirty days, sixty days to get us the truck. Once we know that time span, then order the service body, there will be no bill on the service body until we pick the truck up. They won't bill us for anything until we take the load really.
So there's no way to order the service body in advance of having the truck?
We could, yes.
That's what I'm trying to.
Right, yeah. But that was what Jeremy from Kaida recommended, is once we were confirmed on the truck, to order the box.
Are you concerned about availability of the truck that you've once the second guy? It's, let me rephrase that, is Stillwell confident they can get you?
Yes.
The truck that you want.
Truck that you want, so.
They are.
Because that's probably Kallada's thought processes.
Well.
They don't want to order all the.
They the frames are.
They don't want to order all the parts.
Right.
And everything associated to it until they know what the actual vehicle is for sure, because there's gonna be variations between.
The frames and the mounting points have not changed from twenty four to twenty five. So that was one of my questions. It's not like they went through a whole new redesign thing with trucks, we know they're the same. So.
So the quote we have from Stillwell for the forty nine, seven ninety seven. It is based. On the twenty four, but since we're ordering later in the year and it would be in October, so we're ordering a twenty twenty five. It's why the additional five to seven thousand dollars, is that correct?
Yes.
Still will giving you a a lead time on when they can have it.
They can't do that until we until they can start ordering some of the boxes.
And Stillwell will take the old truck.
They will either take it or then order it.
But we won't have to do it. They will, when you take, when you take delivery. And you've got it, then if the if if we still were tonight, um. Once you have your truck, then you could take.
Yeah, we will, we will not get rid of the current sewer truck until our new one is completely finished and in service.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you.
Right, the other dealers uh giving you the same scenario regarding delivery?
Yeah.
Years?
Yeah. Yeah, cause we're kind of in the, we're in that breaking point right now of. There there's some of the twenty twenty fours they've got left because they'd like to start placing orders for.
Twenty five, should they search and see if they could trade for yours?
The the cabin, that that configuration is not a widely. You know, cause you don't just pull the box off. It's a complete different chassis.
I get it. I'm just seeing if they if they checked for you to see if they could trade for it.
Uh, they they did a little bit, but it was the the rate, the red color was kind of a holdup. And I don't wanna change, I don't have a white truck or a blue truck. It's the time clearly the trucks are red, that's what everybody recommends, so that's why I want to stay with it. So.
Would Kallada open to paint it red all the way across? They're already, they're already purchasing the paint and painting the body. And the.
Paint another truck? Nah, nah.
Just pass me.
That's, that's a whole lot of work. That's jamming doors out, that's pulling everything out of the cabins, that's. There's the floors out, everything. So.
Any questions?
No, I think you answered mine. Well, I think um just for the sake of conversation, I think many of us here know, but. If we were not to move forward with a new sewer truck, what are some of the consequences that are happening currently that you're having to deal with? I know you've already shared about the lights. We all know everything that happened over July fourth, it would have been fabulous if we could have.
Is starting to have issues and we kind of rely on that very heavily for our lift stations. Um, the last time we had a call for. We ran into a scenario where Fremont's crane was down also. And we we traded back and forth. Well, their crane was down, we didn't have a crane. And we had to call Covalin to come out of Fort Wayne and it was a thousand dollars to pull the pump and a thousand dollars to put the pump back in. So.
And currently with the crane, you can only go one. It's finicky.
It's very finicky right now, yes.
But you don't have full range of motion.
Right, that that crane is actually from the late eighties. We purchased that from Angola off from their water department truck.
I know there are other things with the regarding like the snowplow, are there other things that you see as?
Snowplow, because it's got a stud, because it's got a stud going one direction. That's what I thought of when you said one direction.
That was the power that we have on the dump truck now that's not actually designed to be on that truck. So, um. Yeah, it's just. It's a two thousand and eight, it's got almost eighty thousand miles of twenty five mile hour. So. It's. I mean, we put like substantial amount of money into it about. Two to three years ago and it's just got weird little quirks that I think are gonna start making money on us.
Well, they already have.
I mean, we've had. We've had, well, this year we've, I think we put all the new joints in it. Um, we had a bearing law in front of Axol. Trying to remember, I think it was, might have been burdened. Somebody over here on the south. Was yelling at me because the thing wouldn't quit squealing and we couldn't find it. You know, I don't remember who it was, might have been Kerry. So.
So then where um? So we're looking at fifty seven plus fifty seven, um, so where is? From a financial perspective, where would this be coming from? Budget perspective.
So it was said it was planned as part of the capital improvements when we did the rate study. Uh, several years ago, uh, purchase was planned in uh three years. From that rate study. And it all leads me as to what. This year or was even this year or last year when the purchase was planned, so. Uh, there's no benefit staying to that plan.
Any questions for Guy on this?
Sounds like what we got is pretty big. So what's the lifespan of this? They just said a twenty year deal or?
Nah, usually seven to ten years is when most municipalities train trucks on. I mean, we can get away, go a little further just because of the low mileage that we actually put on vehicles. So we do a very good job of keeping them clean and we keep them shut at all times, so. So that holds tremendously.
I appreciate you actually coming in on your big day to support this piece. Um, I would give some information, I'd like to make the title open. Uh, place on the order, a new uh sewer truck service body. Um, when uh twenty twenty five um. Production year orders are being taken. With uh a not to exceed. Of a hundred and sixteen sixteen thousand dollars, which is. Like four price. Give you a little margin or if it goes over there, you have some bad tests.
Thank you. Do you have a motion? Can we have a second?
Spring, sorry.
You have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. And Guy, I just want to say thank you. I know we had a lot of discussion at the last meeting, but coming back with three bits, I know that wasn't easy, but it makes it. Much more um visibly transparent. For everybody here in more thought, so thank you. You know, it wasn't, wasn't an easy task. Um, anything ever? For Z Guy? You're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna, are you gonna end right there at? Well, wait till I get there, we're not. Um, thank you for everything and coming in. I know I saw you multiple days on your week off. So we thank you very much. Um, we're now gonna turn it over to council members for their reports and I think we'll start with uh Dan on the road project.
Okay. So that's uh Regent Bree, early meeting. Was discussing the bridging of. Care gap connecting support for families, employers for childcare. Uh, the presentation was by Northeast Indiana Early Childhood Coalition. Several different uh areas. In Northeast Indiana have identified a drastic need for childcare. And there are several of them that are paired together and working to to create additional capacity for our areas. Unfortunately, I do have to report that Stevan County was approached. By the group that's a little bit further west of us and they declined and stated they would be doing it on their. Very unfortunate here, but I want to make sure everybody understands that our county. Deployed after we had a bigger facility in Fremont closed beginning of this year or leaving. Several family members, including clearly residents, high cry.
Thank you.
Um, George.
Uh, yeah, just uh two items, uh, one regarding the the budget. Uh, we will continue to fine tune the compensation in the budgets and the taxes and the per. Uh, which should be fairly accurate going forward in twenty twenty five. Uh, second, uh, getting a little ahead of myself, but uh we are scrubbing the uh. Salary and wage ordinance before we have the numbers. There's uh a consultant that had a discussion that said, we probably need to read look at this. So in take care of the semantics of it before we check the numbers, so we're working on that. And hopefully uh next consequence, we have something to talk about. Specifics. Nothing to report.
You have. I'm sure. Um, I have something for all of us to um consider. The Tonic Clear Lake has been approached by the Little Long, um, Little Long Lake Water Shed. Group. And they. Would like to use our facilities here to host their meetings. They are on Saturdays for about two hours in the morning. They, it's about twenty five to thirty individuals that come in. They would not use Zoom. They would um like to have Wi-Fi access. If at all possible. So I would say six to seven meetings a year. So I'm just throwing that out for us to discuss on. Whether we want to open it up. We have opened this room up to. Um, the Clear Lake Association and to the Conservancy for this, for their meetings, but this would be outside. Um, part of Little Long, um. So I just, I I didn't want to make that decision without discussing it with all of you. And then the other first point of it is typically, we also let the club have their working meetings here once a month when they. Um, have meetings. The other piece of that is in past, we give a key out to them. I am. Not really a fan of giving the key out to an outside um organization because they could get it. Somewhere else in the building. So that would mean we would have to have somebody come in and open the door and. Lock the door.
Depending on what time the meeting is, we could. Plan our. Plant check around that.
Okay, it's nine.
And I always build.
Okay, it's a, it's nine thirty two, eleven thirty typically, and we have the dates. They already have given us the dates, because I want to have that information.
I would say if you guys don't have a problem with it, probably between me, Guy and Bob, we can let them. If it's something you guys want to do.
I'd order me one of the deals where you unlock that door, you let the first person in. And they're responsible for letting everybody in after that.
Was Jake, pardon?
No.
No, okay. But either another way, if you guys want to let them have access, I can come over here and let them. That was.
Way we work it out.
And was here.
They're quite proactive with the water gun and with the uh. But off of some of the farmers in Stevan County in Clear Lake Township. Uh, that being said, I would be supportive to helping them. Get together and and get their movement uh some traction here. Fix a room to do it. Uh, my vote being given.
Right. Thank you.
Once the door's open, one doesn't get closed. That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
If we open it up to people outside of. The town, we say yes to this one. The next one comes, we say yes. When you get into a scheduling conflict, then we got separate orders. And how do you say yes to one if the next one comes and now we start getting married? And then we have to start saying no, and then we'll criteria to use for the S's or the N's. When it comes to that, so. You know, it's kind of like opening a door that's never been opened before. And we don't know what's gonna happen as a result of it, but we do know a lot of various committees and boards and things around the area. Have people on multiple ones. So if there's somebody in this watershed. Group that's in another group over here, and now all of a sudden they can use the Clear Lake. Down hall. Well, hey, they don't let us do it for this. Let's just go approach them and see if we can use it on Wednesday nights for A D C Corporation.
Right, and that's why um they're they are on Saturdays. It's not during the week. That was one of the things that um Jen and I um looked into, because I think. You know, very good points on. Both sides. Bert, Dan, Buzz?
Hi, I like where uh Frank was going. I'd love to uh I'm a water quality guy, so I'm all in. But uh we think so there's some sort of criteria. For the decision process, um, is probably helpful. Um. Um, but and then on a non-interrupt basis, I think the the folks that uh we've already committed to. Shouldn't be moving there. Right, so and this will fall on Jen's. Shoulders to coordinate.
Would there be a problem if uh our township Conservancy, which is part of. This group would host a meeting here on their behalf?
I like that.
That sounds like a good idea. There you go. We may take that back to him and see if uh.
Well, what all the way, I'll I'll talk to Caroline and before we go forward with anything from this.
And maybe you have any sort of rental agreement or anything like that in place, even if there's no money to pay the value to it, just to protect the town. Should anything happen? Should somebody trip as they're walking in?
Yeah.
Trip walking out. Okay.
Perfect.
Do we have those agreements now? Do we have those agreements, rental agreements? We got a club, uh, the conservative city of like so.
So Nathan, if you could put that on your list to check into from that perspective. Okay, so I think that's the end of council report, so we will now turn it over to the public and I think Todd's gonna kick us off with the road update.
Yes.
Did I, did I get that right?
So uh things have been going really well. Uh, they got. Uh, they were a little slow at the beginning due to. Utilities not getting marked, uh.
Nah, utilities, no. Trucks going down.
Go, trucks going down.
Hydraulics.
Yeah, a little hydraulic, major hydraulic lines on the excavator that took out half of. My half a day, so, but they're moving uh. Very fluidly now, um. They're making up time as best they can. Uh, so uh again, they're working west to east. Uh, so what we called phase one was from the west corporate limits. Through Pender all the way down to the bridge, um. They completed that section, paved it with intermediate asphalt. So that's good. Uh, they're on to phase two, which is from the bridge up to West Clear Lake Drive. They've got. Uh, by seventy five percent of that dug out and stoned. Um, they're hoping to do the remaining portion of that tomorrow. Finding grid, if everything goes right, whether cooperate, find grid on Friday and pave that section with intermediate. On Monday. And then they'll continue on space three and four.
Um, so one and two be open to the residents on Hunter Drive against exhibition and that, because I had a couple of questions.
Yeah. Hopefully by tomorrow.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it almost could have happened today, but we had, we had stone piles to move and paper to move and. It's like, let's.
That was great. I forgot to tell you that. I saw the the stone pile you put there to kind of add the little extra and we just, the equipment started moving. Great idea. You totally did. It was, once you guys had moved the equipment out, because when everybody drives. I live right down there. I know Kathy knows where I live. I live right on Hunter Drive, so I see the traffic going back and forth. And when you guys have the equipment. And when you guys had the equipment sitting right there to prevent them from going, everybody just turned around. Like they, someone didn't even make it all the way to the end and started turning it around. So, yeah. Commend, commend you guys on that to, to keep it driven for me.
Yeah, they, we had to go above and beyond for barricading because they were turning Peter's yard into their two-track. So.
So phase three and four will start in the middle of next week is what you're thinking, cause that will cause that one to cost. That'll be.
Yeah.
Any adjustments to completion dates due to the start?
Completion date is still set, uh, you know, as part of the contract on October fifteen. I guess so they're making up time, so at this point they haven't indicated that they will. So. And the only, they, they only, uh. Discovery. Uh, was that, uh, Steel Culvert, it was between the driveway and the. The swamp area that you couldn't have seen if you, so. But it was good, that got replaced because that was a steel culvert that was rusting out on the bottom. So. That, that took another day, it's more than worth it.
And it wasn't an adequate, uh.
Wasn't a, a, a big tear.
I felt bad for Frank, uh, going labor for EBI. Cause everybody's like, yeah, it's right, it's, it's in this spot right here. Frank dug probably three foot deep and probably eight foot long looking for that culvert. And it was about ten foot to the east of where he quit digging.
Yeah, but it turned out that the impact was on the low side.
Yes, right. Yeah, yeah, it was lost to the basins and what it could, so.
Anything, you want to add, Dan or?
No, I, I appreciate Guy and Todd, they've been on site every day. I've been distracted with other things and, uh, we've had many products of, of progress, so thanks. Good. Good job.
Yeah, great job.
And everything we've heard from the residents on this section are. They like the, the decrease in traffic.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Andrew, one, Andrew Newton, I asked us to leave the barricades up.
You know, and when it's finished, uh, Chris is gonna get very busy with speeders.
Yeah.
He's gonna turn it into a racetrack, you know.
Twice, wait, you put those signs up? Frank?
Bridge.
Yes.
Was, was anything identified, any concerns about the bridge at all? The one that had the exposed one a few years ago?
Um, so we, we haven't found. Any indication of exposed wood? Have we looked at? I talked with, uh, Chip Ward today, actually, the county engineer. Um, one thing Guy brought up was it would be nice to go in, there's. Five to six inches of asphalt, what's been exposed that we could see that's on the top of that bridge. Um, guys brought up the point of, hey, can we mill or mill that inch and a, first inch and a half off the top of that? That way when they pave it, it's. So I talked to him about that. He's got no records of, of anything on that bridge. So, um, he goes, I don't see a problem with that at all. I know, so. Yeah.
Well, no, the surface of that bridge is all cracked.
Yeah, there's. Uh, pothole patch and a bunch of cracks sealed on it already, so. Now, once that's paved through, those lower cracks are gonna reflect through, but at least will be all one. Consistent level. Consistent level, yeah.
Yeah, that's a county bridge?
Yeah, it's traced, yeah.
Okay, anything, Kathy, no? All right. So that's the end of our general discussion, so I'll put a motion for adjournment. And a second? And we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing done, motion carried. Please do not leave. We've got several things behind. And I just wanna remind everybody that on October eighth, we have our executive.
Yeah.
Hey, Nathan, can I have some, sorry, I wrote?
Yes. Thanks.
Kathy, Josh.
So you didn't determine something? Essentially what happens is like if you have one. But then after, afterward, I'm not being a star.
So the temporary permit, I got some out here, so I came here.
Oh. And from the bottom right, I think.